Good evening, this is the Coeur d'Alene Planning and Zoning Commission, and this is our regular meeting for May. It's Tuesday, May 12th. Shannon, would you do the roll call, please?
Jordan.
Here.
Fleming.
Here.
Ingalls.
Here.
Luttrell.
Here.
Messina.
Here.
Rumppler.
Here.
Ward. O'Brien. Cousins.
Okay, thank you, Shannon. All right, next of all, please join us for the Pledge of Allegiance.
My pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, individual with liberty and justice for all.
All right, so first on our list of agenda items tonight is approval of minutes from the April 14th meeting. Mr. Chairman, I would make a motion that we approve the minutes from last meeting.
And I will second said motion.
Okay. So we have a motion and a second by Ingalls and Luttrell. Any discussion? All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right, so the minutes are approved. Okay, next, we have two new commissioners with us, and this is exciting. We had a large pool of applicants, and we have two new commissioners that were recently appointed by the mayor and city council. To my left, which would be your right if you're watching on TV or out in the audience, is Lynn Fleming. And welcome aboard, Lynn.
Thank you.
And then at the, on the left, I guess, if you're out watching on TV or in the audience, would be Louis Rumppler. And welcome you both.
Thank you.
They both have some extensive experience, and so it's great to have you onboard with us. Okay, and now, let's see, Shannon, you're going to administer the oath for the two new commissioners. Okay, great. Just follow Shannon down there.
Raise your right hand. Okay. I, Lynn Fleming, and Louis Rumppler, a planning commission appointee of the city of Coeur d'Alene, do solemnly swear or affirm that I will faithfully perform the duties of my appointed office and will support and honor, to the best of my ability, the Constitution of the United States, the state of Idaho, and all applicable laws, ordinances, and policies of the state of Idaho in the city of Coeur d'Alene, as well as the policies, procedures, code of ethics, and code of conduct of the Coeur d'Alene Planning Commission. I hereby, through this oath, affirm that I will perform the duties of this public trust in a fair, equitable, and ethical manner befitting the dignity and responsibilities of the office.
I do.
You can keep that. I have another one. And there's your copy. Thank you.
Thank you, Shannon. Welcome aboard.
Thank you. Pleasure to be here.
Okay, next is our section for public comments. This would be if anybody in the audience would like to address the planning commission about an item other than those on the agenda tonight. This is the time to step forward. Since there's only one person in the audience who happens to be an applicant tonight, I don't see a lot of other members of the public wanting to address the commission. All right, and any commissioner comments?
Did you want to talk about Cousins?
I thought you wanted to.
Well, Mr. Chair, yes, very briefly. This time of year, school, getting out, graduation of high school and others, our two student, or at least one of our, both of our student representatives are going on. And I think it's worth noting that both of them have scholarships, as I understand, not of the athletic type, but of the academic type. And I think they're pretty close to full rides. One is to, Cole is going to Architect's School in Montana State, and Kristen is going to go to USC. It speaks very highly, I think, of our school system, and also reflects very well on us as commissioners having such astute, bright students working with us. And I hope that this sort of lasts, that as they graduate and they get jobs, they too will volunteer like we have. And it's just, it's very enjoyable being associated with people, students like this.
Yeah, they're both two great young people, so it's nice to have them onboard as our student reps. We've enjoyed having them. Okay, anything else? Okay, staff comments?
Okay, so we do have one item for June. It'll be for the railroad annexation, and that will be coming forward next month. Also, the East Sherman Avenue master planning effort will kick off in June. The city will be partnering with CDA 2030 on this project. Two town hall meetings have been scheduled, one for June 3rd at the library community room, and June 18th at the Harding Center. Both meetings will have the same format and will take place from 5:00 to 7:00 p.m. Please help spread the word about the town hall meetings. The Design Review Commission has expressed interest in having design criteria for East Sherman to provide guidance and to help the area transition. Additionally, the Design Review Commission has expressed concern with the city's existing parking requirements in areas subject to design review. Because they recognize parking is outside of their purview, the commission has asked staff to discuss parking with the planning commission. As future code amendments are brought forward to the planning commission, parking requirements can be reviewed and discussed. The next one is Lori Burchett has accepted a position with King County Metro in Seattle, and her last day is tomorrow. We're very sad to see that she is leaving us, but we are very grateful for her contributions to community planning in the city of Coeur d'Alene, including recognizing last year, October, as Community Planning Month. The city will be advertising for the open planning position soon.
Okay, thank you, Sean. I would echo that. In the short year I've known Lori, she did a great job here and did some important things here. So she did a great job for us. So anyway, I guess best of luck to her as she moves on. Anything from you, Warren?
Couple things. Given that we have a couple new planning commission members, we're likely going to be scheduling a training session coming up in the very near future. I think we're going to mix it up. The format we've done the last, say, four, five years, you've seen that dog and pony show enough that I think we're going to mix it up a little bit and try something different. Not exactly sure what that's going to look like yet. We're still working on it, but that's coming your way soon. Also, wanted to give you a bit of follow-up on the Forest Service office building that you talked about last month. Following the meeting, staff pulled together some of the neighborhood representatives and the Forest Service management and sat down and had a discussion about how we'd move forward with the buffer yard, and helping hopefully bring folks together a little bit and actually speak to what they would like to see there. And happy to report that I think that we've reached some common ground, and I think both sides are happy in moving forward.
So that's great. I think that, I think that was proactive, and that was a great thing you did. So we've avoided a hotly contested appeal at the city council, hopefully.
Yeah, I think that's probably true at this point. I think the bigger thing was just hopefully getting people in a room and a dynamic where you can actually speak to each other rather than the sort of stilted conversations you have to have at a public hearing. It's not really a great forum for having a discussion. So I think it helped bridge some divides there, and hopefully everyone's going to move forward in a, I don't know what the right word, they're moving forward in pushing this project along. And I think they're actually going to be potentially having some work parties together, planting some trees together, neighborhood parties, that type of thing. So I think it's going to be a good thing.
I think that's great.
It's a wonderful piece of work. No, I'm sorry.
As I said, that's like the best outcome you could hope for. I think that's great. Rather than have another go-around at the city council, to actually have something everybody agreed on, that they, that they're fairly happy with, both sides, it sounds like, then I think that's great. That's a lot better use of the time. So that was proactive for staff to do that, I commend you. Go ahead, Peter.
No, I was just referring, I was just, an excellent piece of work to take the initiative on that. And that's very, very great.
Okay, the next thing, since Heather Bowlby has retired, she did a great job, and we will miss her, but wish her well in her retirement. Since Heather Bowlby is retired, she was formerly the vice chair, so we have nominations and elections for the new vice chair. Commissioner Ingalls?
Mr. Chair, I would like to nominate by motion the longstanding commissioner, the very talented Commissioner Messina would make an excellent vice chair. And that would be my motion to nominate him to serve this one-year period.
I would certainly be pleased to second your motion, if I may. Ms. Ingalls?
Okay, so we have a nomination for Messina, and a second by Luttrell. So are there any other nominations tonight for vice chair? All right, seeing none. I guess next we'd vote on the nomination we have for vice chair, so.
That's correct.
All in favor of Commissioner Messina as the vice chair? Say aye.
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 Opposed? Okay, so it looks like it's unanimous.
Well, thank you.
It's the longstanding or long-suffering Commissioner Messina.
You're not allowed to take any time off, though.
So congratulations, and welcome as the vice chair.
Thank you.
Okay. We have one public hearing tonight, and the applicant is Lake Forest LLC. The address is 1555 West Hanley Avenue. This is a proposed 66-lot preliminary plat called Lake Forest West First Edition. And this is a quasi-judicial hearing. This is S-1-14M. Does anyone have any conflicts of interest to declare? All right, seeing none, then we'll turn it over to Sean.
All right, thank you, Brad. So this is basically reiterating the information that you just provided. The location is 13.97 acres near the northeast corner of Hanley Avenue and Ramsey Road. It's a 66-lot proposed preliminary plat. They are requesting, basically, that's the decision point as well. It's a modification. Here's an aerial photo of the area. If you remember, those of you who have been on the planning commission longer than today, that this yellow outline is the original request for Lake Forest West. They have come back to us with another preliminary plat to modify this, and this is the subject property here in blue. There are some photos of the subject property. This is from Canfield, looking southwest. As you can see, curb gutter sidewalk, as well as the street trees, and the drainage is in. This is the subject property out here. It's another view, basically from the same location, but looking more west. And this is Canfield Avenue showing the other side that has been completed, that has curb gutter sidewalk, as well as the drainage, street trees, and buffer yard. So there are required findings that need to be made. I'll go back just for a moment and give you a touch more history. On January 14th, 2014, Lake Forest West LLC received approval for Lake Forest West, and it included the following elements. It was an R8 zone neighborhood. It has 175 residential lots on approximately 54.9 acres. There is a total of five phases of residential development, and one 2.96 acre of commercial on the southwest corner. There is also open space and trail system throughout the development. So I guess the first question is, what's the difference? So in 2014, there was 175 lots, and they're requesting an additional 18 lots within this request on this phase. It is, so that difference is 18. And so it goes from 175, which was their original request, to 193. You can take a look on that page one of my staff report, and you can see that it's closer to an R3 as far as the total amount of density than it is an R8, so they are well within the requirements of the zone. Okay, so finding B7A is that all of the general preliminary plat requirements have or have not been met as attested to by the city engineer. And so per the section 16.1203O of the municipal code, Gordon has given his blessing for that all of the general requirements for preliminary plats are present. So here is a picture of the preliminary plat. It's a little bit difficult to see, but I wanted to show you overall what their request was. I did a little zoom here, so we can better see what the request is. It's also important to notice, to note that the alignment for the street does not change with this request. It is generally just a request for an increase in density, as well as a minor shift in the phasing. So finding B7B is that the provisions for sidewalks, streets, alleys, rights-of-way easements, street lighting, fire protection, planting, drainage, pedestrian, and bicycle facilities and utilities are or are not adequate where applicable. So our comments from staff can be found on pages six and seven of the staff report. Like I had said earlier, there is not a whole lot of change. There's mostly a reiteration of what was presented at the previous hearing. So I wanted to take a moment and talk about the shift in phasing. This is the plan from 2014. This is the area of request here, and as you can see, the phasing was split here, and this was that additional phase, that fifth phase. And they are requesting a reduction in total amount of phases. So you can see that Phase 1, 2, 3, and 4. So the phasing does not follow exactly where the line is of their request. I did talk to Chris Bates about that. He said that that is perfectly acceptable, and it's a function of the way that it will be served by sewer. I guess the, I'm losing my mouse pointer. That the sewer ends up draining this way on this phase, and so with the improvements made in Phase 4, it's a separate, I guess, sewer system lateral. I'm sure that the applicants can speak further to that if you need additional information. So finding B7C is that the proposed preliminary plat does or does not comply with all of the subdivision design standards and all of the subdivision improvement standards. So on pages eight and nine, I do, I talk about, as well as Chris Bates talks about, double frontage lots and driveway approaches with knuckles. And there is also, I'll get to it in a moment. There is also a picture in there that shows the design, or shows those deviation requests. So finding B7D is that the lots proposed in the preliminary plat do or do not meet the requirements of the applicable zoning district. It is currently zoned R8, which allows residential by right. The frontage and knuckles that I just mentioned are the deviation requests. We did talk to the legal department about that, and they were comfortable with allowing, if the planning commission chooses, is to adopt the findings that were previously done at the hearing before, and that would be acceptable for those deviations. They were already approved prior. This is a different request. And the minimum lot size is 5,500 square feet. I did take a look at it. Drew did approach me before the meeting and said that there was a tiny little error where one of the lots is off by just a teeny, tiny bit. I did not catch that. And he said that he can adjust it over a tenth of a foot, and that it would meet the requirement. It was an oversight. So here are the illustrated deviations. You can see here are the knuckles that we're talking about. So the request is that all the sidewalk and the driveways are one continuous access until they reach the backside of the sidewalk where they can be divided for access to each one of the individual private residential lots. And it's the reverse on this end. This is also showing the tract A, which is the buffer yard, and also the tract here as well along Canfield. That is the buffer yard. So inside of the staff report, we had talked about, I had talked about the difference in the change of subdivision code, and that they have changed since the approval of Lake Forest West. We staff chewed on this for quite some time, and I talked to Warren about it, and, you know, we conferred that requiring them, after they've made the extensive improvements that they've made to provide the additional buffer yard requirement along this new phase, has the potential to create a bit of a disjointed feel to the area. The buffer yards are already in on the northern side, so if we're looking at the southern side, there would be an additional 10 feet on both Ramsey as well as Canfield, which would give the view of the fences being out of alignment along Ramsey as well as Canfield. You know, that's something to consider. So we do have proposed conditions. There are eight total. They are in your staff report. I've listed them here. Most of them, in fact, I'm pretty sure all of them are reiterations of what was prior. Utility easement for onsite, for onsite public sewer infrastructure needs to be dedicated to the city and shown, which it is. The mains will be required to front all buildable lots. It's pretty, you know, it's specific language, but it's requirements of our code. All water infrastructure will be provided prior to the submission of building permits, and at buildout, the looping of all mains to maintain the quality of services for water. Planning, this is the requirement that we had previously. It was a minimum 10-foot tract along Canfield and a 20-foot tract along Ramsey. With a planting screen shall be dedicated for all the double-frontage lots. And a planting screen, basically saying that they would have to bond for that at 150% or provide it prior to getting CO. Also, the formation of a homeowners association, which I believe has already been done. It's just, we are reiterating that with this new, with this change. And then engineering, with the comments that were made in the staff report also included a condition that requires the knuckles to be continuous until they reach the backside of sidewalk. And with that, that completes my staff report. Planning commission must consider to, must consider this request and make appropriate findings to approve, deny, or deny without prejudice. And your worksheets are attached to your packets. With that. Okay. Thank you, Sean. I think we have a question for you.
Sean, I have a couple questions. If you wouldn't mind going to the larger zoomed-in view of the plat for a second. That'd work. We talked a few minutes ago, Mr. Wilson did, about, you know, the 80-foot buffer zone for, you know, a different project. And in this case, you know, there's some folks that are going to live right next to some C17 with what looks like, you know, less than 80 feet of buffer. So in a little concern of what those houses are going to be like when they abut that C17, the question would be for some kind of buffering. That could be a convenience store, you know, a logical kind of thing like that. The buffering that one would hope for between those houses and that property, does that come with the C17 project when it comes along?
It does, correct. At time of permit, when this piece here, the square that is currently zoned C17, comes forward, we will use the C17 design guidelines and the buffer yard requirements there at the backside of these residential lots to buffer that.
Thank you. Also, on the deviations first, you know, I totally understand the fact that, you know, some of the setbacks on Canfield and Ramsey, you know, that are already in, and it makes sense to just continue that. And it would be easier to, you know, in the 16.25.040 deviation criteria, it would be easy for the setback deviation to make the finding that there's an exceptional or extraordinary circumstance or condition on the ground that warrants making, you know, making that deviation. Even though I'm totally comfortable with the knuckle thing, and there's only two of them, and we've even had, you know, common driveways, you know, let alone just common approaches. I'm okay with it on the ground. I'm just struggling a little bit, and maybe Mr. Wilson can help me, you know, in trying to make the finding of exceptional or extraordinary circumstances or conditions with respect to the knuckles. I'm struggling with how we get there.
Let me speak to that a little bit. So in January of last year, the Lake Forest West plat came forward to you, and you considered it. At that time, the street layout was exactly the same as what you're seeing here. The thing that's changed in this plat is really density. You're seeing more lots. That's frankly the only change. The buffer yards were the same. The knuckles were the same. All of those things remained the same. You're just getting a few more lots. You're able to essentially shrink lots to get a little more density in there. So you already approved last January those knuckles. And so it gets to becoming a really interesting question. What's coming before you, you've already approved. So that's why I think the deference to the previous findings on the deviations made sense, because that's issues frankly not really germane to night, because you've already told them, go forth and go do this. Similar with the buffer yards, the little bit of difference there is in the interim, the city code has changed. They designed it and built it to the last code. They were the last subdivision through that wicket. And so they've come back through, and given that they've built a good share of those buffer yards, it doesn't make a ton of sense to change horses in mid-course and have them do something different when they've already got it built. So that's kind of where we're at. It's in some ways, it's a bit of a beat-to-fit, paint-to-match kind of deal. It's probably the last one of these we will see. I can't think of another subdivision that sort of was on that cusp.
And as a practical matter, you know, we have knuckles like this with joint approaches all over town, do we not? And I'm not aware of problems with those?
Yeah, I was thinking back today, talking with Sean. This goes back, gosh, probably 10 years. There was a discussion, maybe Chairman Jordan or Commissioner Messina might remember, there was a discussion back probably 10-ish years ago when John Stampsos was handling most of the public hearings about we had consistent requests for deviations for knuckles, and how do we deal with that? And we see them often enough, maybe we ought to talk about, is there a way to authorize those sort of as a matter of course, rather than having every time somebody comes in with a subdivision, having to go through the deviation when it becomes frankly it's a matter of course. It happens almost every subdivision. So, and that's something to kick around, sort of outside of this hearing context, but it's something to keep in mind, that maybe there's a way that we can address that in a manner that we just, it just becomes a subdivision standard that they designed to rather than a deviation.
Thank you.
Any other questions? All right, Sean, thank you. Drew, do you want to come on up, state your name and address, and I'll swear you in?
Evening, Mr. Chairman, fellow commissioners. Drew Ditman, Lake City Engineering, 3909 North Schreiber Way, great city of Coeur d'Alene.
Okay, Drew, and you swear the testimony you're giving us tonight will be the whole truth and nothing but the truth, so help you God?
I do.
Okay, go ahead.
First off, I want to say congratulations to the new commissioners. Hope to be working with you guys in the future. Commissioner Messina, congratulations as well. Sean did my job for me, I think. Covered most everything that I wanted to cover, so I'll be Covered most everything that I wanted to cover, so I'll be very brief. What I've got shown up here is the original plat that we brought forward a little over a year ago, which showed, as Sean had said, 175 units on a little over 51 acres for a total density of about 3.3 units to the acre. Since then, we have developed Phase 1, which I've outlined in blue there, which I think consists of 65 lots. Actually, that was Phase 1 and 2 combined. We got a little aggressive and went ahead of schedule. That product type is selling great, but over half of those lots are currently built on, have homes on them. We're pulling permits every day. What we're here tonight to present is, I guess, a response to some market demand for some smaller lots to allow us to mix up the product type a little bit in the subdivision. So, what we're bringing forth tonight is the area outlined in red that I've shown up there. Again, just changing the density, shrinking some of the lots down to that 50, 55-foot wide lot to give us the ability to do a different product. Street configurations, utility configurations, buffer zones, everything stays the same, just the lots get a little smaller. So, here was a blow-up, same blow-up that Sean had shown. So, if you look at the project as a whole, and I think Sean discussed this briefly in the staff report, same 51 acres of the entire project with the additional lots were up to 193 lots, but still our density is about 3.7 units to the acre, well below that R8 standard. So, as a whole, the subdivision still fits those zoning requirements. And then Sean discussed the phasing, so I don't need to go into that unless there's additional questions on the phasing. With that, I'd be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Okay, thanks, Drew. Go ahead.
A couple of easy questions. One, could you point to the one lot that, you know, needs a teeny tweak or what?
This one right here. It's been fixed on our end. It just didn't get it into the packet. It was short, I think, 13 square feet, so like Sean said, we'll just tweak the lot line over and we've already fixed it on our end, so.
Other question, there's eight proposed conditions. Have you had a chance to digest those and are you okay with those?
We have and we don't take exception to any of them.
Thank you.
Quick question, is the continuation of the white fence intended? Do you know?
Yep. The continuation of the white fence, the same landscaping theme, everything's going to continue, everything's going to stay the same, correct?
Anything else? Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Well, I don't, I don't think we'll have any other public testimony or rebuttal from the applicant tonight, so we can have some discussion. Is anyone ready to make a motion?
I would make a motion, Mr. Chairman, that we approve this request and I would be prepared to make the findings. So, the motion would suggest that this matter came before the planning commission tonight on May 12th, this being item S-114 for preliminary plat approval. Modification for Lake Forest West First Edition, a 66-lot subdivision on plus or minus 13.97 acres. Applicant being Lake Forest LLC for the plus or minus 13.97 acres near the northwest corner of Hanley Avenue and Ramsey Road. The findings would incorporate as are listed in the findings worksheet B1 through B7. B7A, as Sean pointed out, the preliminary plat requirements have been met as attested by the city engineer, that all preliminary plat requirements have been met. B7B, that the provisions for sidewalk, streets, alleys, right-of-ways, easements, street lighting, fire protection, planting, drainage, pedestrian and bicycle facilities and utilities are adequate and that is based on the presentation that Sean Holm presented and the statements in the staff report, that the arterials will feed the traffic volume okay and the interior streets are those that have basically already been approved. Water is sufficient, adequate wastewater capacity, no concerns from wastewater and so forth. B7C, that the proposed preliminary plat is in compliance with all of the subdivision design standards contained in chapter 16.15. And that is based on the staff report as well as the interpretation from legal that the deviations are basically, in essence, on par with the preliminary, with the previous approvals for Lake Forest. B7D, the lots proposed in the preliminary plat do meet the requirements of the preliminary, or the applicable zoning district and that is based on the minimum lot size being met. I think the minimum is 5837, which is okay. Lots meet minimum frontage and gross density is within the maximum allowed for the R8 zone. B8, the deviations that we discussed, both the setbacks on Hanley and Canfield as well as the joint driveway approaches in the two knuckles, again, are deviations that kind of lend themselves to some interpretation because the standards have changed since the initial Lake Forest approval. And we basically already approved that interior road network there. So, as a conclusion and decision, the planning commission pursuant to the aforementioned finds that the request of Lake Forest LLC for preliminary plat of approval as described in the application should be approved with the eight special conditions that are noted in the staff report and findings worksheet.
Commissioner Ingles, if you might, for B8, you could say something along the lines of the deviations are approved for the reasoning contained in the findings for S-114 from January 14, 2014.
That's the clarity I was looking for when I said the previous approval. Thank you. That's what I meant to say.
All right, so we have a motion by Ingles. Thank you very much. Is there a second?
A second.
Second by Messina. Any discussion? Okay, Shannon, roll call, please. Yes.
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 Yes. Okay, so that's approved unanimously, S-1-14M. Do we have a motion for adjournment?
There'll be a motion. Motion to adjourn.
I'll second.
Okay, motion by Messina.
I'll second.
Second by Fleming. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, thank you. So, we're adjourned until June then.